Meeting in the school board is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garzy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seiberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mr. Igba.
Here.
Ms. Tannowey. Mr. Beebe.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, first up will be superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Thank you Chair Seiberg. Good evening, other members of the board. Thank you for having us here tonight. And welcome to our full house. It's so good to see everybody here as we celebrate some exciting achievement. We have quite a few spotlights for this evening, so I will jump right in. We have our Baldwin Intermediate School Virginia History Day state competition winners. Exciting news out of Baldwin Intermediate. We wanted to bring these two students to you tonight to share information about their recent competition they were in. But now they are, they have even bigger news. So we thought we would have them last time and that they were going to come tonight with something that was exciting. But this is even bigger. So Amanda Jones, fifth and sixth grade, gifted and talented resource teacher for both of our intermediate schools, is here tonight to assist in sharing this news and introduce our special guest.
So I know this is a little, maybe hard to see, I don't know, but, and so I would bring it in case for the visuals. So this is, um, this is Damian and this is Grayson, and they're both students at Baldwin Intermediate in fifth grade. And this is their Virginia History Day project, uh, which is about the Tehran Conference of 1943 during World War II. And, um, as Ms. Radford said, we competed with this project first at the regional competition in Fairfax on March 5th, and they won first place in their division, which was for Northern Virginia, um, sort of all of the big counties and all the big schools for Northern Virginia, for grades four and five with this project. And so we got to advance to the, um, to the statewide competition. And I think I have maybe about one minute or so of video if it works, but it looks like it might not work. That's okay. We don't need the video. Uh-oh, but now am I stuck? Oh, okay. That's okay. I just need to try to get to the next one. Okay, here we go. We'll just go to this. Um, so this is just, uh... There we go. This is just a little, would you want me to take?
I'd love to do one to be...
Um, whatever, this is fine. No, I'm okay. Thank you so much. This is just a, uh, visual of what National History Day is. So it's a competition, um, that they have every year in June at, call it, at the University of Maryland College Park, bringing kids from all 50 states with history projects and a bunch of different categories like exhibit, paper, performance, documentary, et cetera. Uh, but it is only for grades six through 12. So we are very lucky that our state affiliate, which is, uh, the Virginia, Virginia History Day, sponsored by the Virginia Museum of History and Culture, decided to add grades four and five a few years ago. So, um, they've only been doing that for a few years, and the kids are actually limited to having to do an exhibit, which, um, is just sort of what you see right here. I think they would have liked to have a chance to try some of the other categories, but if they do it again next year, they will be able to do that, which is great. Um, that is a close-up of their project, and my email is there if anyone would like to see. The PDF where I actually have pictures of each part close-up and you can read it. I also have, this is probably not enough copies, but I have, um, eight copies, I think. They had to write a very short process paper explaining exactly how they did the project and, and just a bibliography, um, showing what all their sources were. So I brought a few of those in case anybody would like to see, so that it really explains how they chose the topic, how they went about doing the whole thing. Um, I've got a couple pictures from the regional competition, and then I discovered today, right before I came, that the winners of the regional competition are listed on the Mount Vernon website. And so, uh, their names are on there, um, on MountVernon.org. So that's a nice piece of celebrity. And, um, then these are a few pictures from the state contest, which was just this past Saturday in Richmond. And, um, I thought it was a lot of fun. We've got, um, you could see who went with us, Grayson's mom and dad and brother, who goes to Osborne, and Mr. Vargas and me, and that you can see them up on stage with their medals. So they won first place in their division again at the statewide level. And on top of that, they also won a special award, which was from the General Douglas MacArthur Foundation for an outstanding project related to World War I, World War II, the occupation of Japan, or the Korean War. So they won that as well, and that one comes with, um, a $50 cash prize and medallion from the MacArthur Foundation. We have not received those items, but I will be calling. So, um, I just really want to commend them for their amazing work, focus, drive. All of this is from them, the topic, the finding the pictures, the choosing the quotes, the, the written part that's on the board. All of it is completely student-produced. I would say, um, Mrs. Harris at Baldwin and I helped them with some things like gluing stuff on. I brought them a few library books. But really, I mean, it's, it's all, it's all internally driven with these two. They are, um, to me, kind of, a, a great example of why we need a gifted and talented program, because they have this real internal drive that is coming from them, not from the gifted program. And honestly, Grayson writes papers and does research projects about history on his own in his free time. Um, but by having a GT program, I think we can, you know, help them take that and channel it into a product that they can expose to a wider audience. And I also, I really want to thank Mr. Vargas for everything that he's done to support this, and Ms. Neal, and the school board, because, um, you, in the last couple of years, you've allowed us to pretty much double the GT program as far as getting a full-time supervisor and also more teachers. And this, I, to me, this is really a success of the way that we've been able to expand it, because not only have we been able to bring in more kids, we've been able to cast a wider net in terms of the kids that need GT services. Believe it or not, both of these kids were like, at one time, found not eligible for GT, like, earlier in elementary school, which is very surprising. I think it's just a result of the fact that the program at that time was very small and had limited amount of staff and limited amount of instruments that they could use to determine eligibility. So I think we've really been able to, with expanding it, um, reach a lot more kids. I think these kids would have gotten to GT by fifth grade probably anyway, but the fact that I've had, I've been teaching, I've been lucky enough to have Grayson since third grade, and that really allowed me to go in before the first day of school this year to his teacher, Ms. Harris, and say, "This kid is coming. He's going to need a massive amount of differentiation enrichment and extension in social studies, and what can we do?" And then we started planning for this, like, before the first day of school. And Ms. Harris was excited and ready to meet him on that day. So if we had not gotten him into gifted in advance until later, I think we wouldn't have been able to pull this off this year. So it's a real testament, I think, to early identification, too, and what that can do. So, I'm sure I have talked way more than enough, but I, uh, I would, I don't know. Do you guys want to say anything? That's really putting you on the spot. I'm sorry, that is really putting you on the spot. That's all I have.
Congratulations to them on their state win. We're going to have you all stay here so you can take a picture together. Uh, I think it's Mr. Hollingsworth and...
Mrs. Seiberg, do you want the other guy?
And also, I think, as I was talking to Ms. Neal last week, um, we were saying that I don't think that we've ever placed at the district level, so, let alone winning at the state level. So this is really an exciting time and a testament to the things that Ms. Jones was just talking about. Perfect. Congratulations, guys. Okay, next we have Osborne High School information. Osborne High School has qualified for the highest award given to school music programs for Virginia, in Virginia for the 21-22 school year. The Virginia Music Educator Association, or VMEA, Blue Ribbon Award recognizes, um, school performing arts programs that achieve excellence in band, orchestra, and choral performance. All disciplines in a single school must receive a rating of superior at assessments to qualify for the award, according to the VMA, uh, VMEA, uh, website. And so you remember, we had Mr. Wassum here at our last meeting, and he kind of let the cat out the bag, um, because it was really fresh then, and, um, I've asked them all to be here tonight. So Ms. Weaver is here, and she is the department chair for Fine Arts, and I've just asked her to come and introduce who all was able to be here with us tonight. Look, they're fighting over the opportunity. To let us know who all came with them.
Um, I don't know the students' names, but I definitely have... Oh, you can do it? Okay, so Angela Easy, our choir director, and then Mr. Andrew Wassum, our band director at Osborne. And we had a little bit of a hiccup today. We totally forgot, and it jumped up on us as, um, for today. So we gathered some band and choir students to join us. Congratulations, guys. This is our second year in a row. If the pandemic hadn't happened, we probably definitely would have had three years in a row, but it's quite an achievement, and it takes a lot of hard work and effort. And my teachers are extremely humble, always, and they, they always strive really hard to make it, and it's nice to work with humble people, because they're always like, "We're not going to do it, we're not going to do it." I'm like, "Yes, you are, it's going to happen." And here we are. So congratulations, and that's quite an achievement. You should be very proud.
No, we understood that it was a very, very large group, and so we were happy to have a representation of, of everyone tonight. So thank you all for being here, and congratulations to you. So we're going to kind of, um, let me see. Yeah, yeah, I probably have to stack just a little bit. Yeah. She's the director, she knows what to do. Yeah, that's exactly right. Let's see. Make sure I can, yeah, that's perfect. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Let's go, one more, one. Oh, yeah, go ahead and take it all the way off then. Here we go. One, two, three. All right, that's great. Thank you. You can stay. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Are you coming back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have, um, Osborne Juniors Ashley, A.J. Lopez, and Kalen Martinez. Are you here?
Yeah, A.J. is.
Oh, A.J. is here. Why don't you come on up? They were invited to attend the Summer Residential Governor's School Visual Arts Program. This is a very selective program that only accepts the highest achieving art students in the state. A.J. and Kalen will spend a month of the summer at Radford University, where they will participate in an intensive visual arts educational experience with excellent art students from around the state. So we want to congratulate both of them, and did you have anything you want to say about that program?
Um, I believe this is the first year that we've had this, so it's quite an accomplishment. We've had numerous students try over the years, but Kalen and, um, A.J. are our first, so quite an achievement, so, very cool. And their artwork is on display currently in the Fine Arts Commons at Osborne High School.
Great. Congratulations to you. All right. Good job. All right, thank you. Actually, Osborne is on tonight. So, this one is really exciting, okay. Tonight, we are pleased to have the Osborne High School Lambda Corp. 1895 Robotics Team, who won first place at the First Chesapeake District Greater D.C. event last month. The team is sponsored by the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation, Lockheed Martin, Micron Technology, Lidos, and Osborne High School. At this time, I'd like to have Dr. Menakshi Chidari, OHS Science Teacher and Robotics Team Mentor, and Team 1895 come forward to share more about their experience and demonstrate how the Eagletron robot works. You might want, you can sit down for now until we finish.
Good evening, uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you, school board, for inviting Osborne High School Robotics Team Lambda Corps 1895 and recognizing our success. I'm so proud of our students who brought, actually, this is the second winning banner, um, home this year, one we got before the COVID year. Um, I'm so proud of my team. They are wonderful, wonderful, very hardworking, and they inspire me, actually. We have the real inspiration here, Mr. Frederick, Mr. Ortega, Mr. Barbutza, and Mr. Pugmar, who is standing behind here. We have wonderful parent volunteers who are always supporting us. They are the strong supporters, inspiration, and guide to our team. Instead of I talk too much, I will head, um, to Mr. Ortega, call him over here, and explain more about our Eagletron and, uh, students, who are the real heroes of this winning. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. About Dean Deuce, Sebastian, he is our mechanical, uh, project lead. So he's head of our whole mechanical side, and hopefully we have something. He's going to explain the robot, how to deal with what they built, and what they, hopefully we will have a robot. We're used to a much wider field. So driving is Kyle and helping is Jonathan. Kyle's been around for a few years. He's been our driver since a freshman, and he is now going to be a junior, or senior upcoming, right? So Sebastian will talk about the robot.
Uh, thank you for having us. We love being here to talk about our robot. We're all nerds here. So, uh, the way First works is that it gathers, uh, robotics teams from high schools all around the country and around the world, and they partner with companies like Boeing, Lockheed Martin, they even worked with Disney's Force for Change last season, and this year it was Boeing's turn, uh, to turn a problem that they've been having into a game for us to help solve. Uh, and this was the automation of loading cargo and then storing a robot into a hangar. And that's, uh, the game we were tasked with, and at the end of our season, at the end of districts, we ranked around the 25th out of all of the greater D.C., Maryland, and Virginia, um, schools. And so, the way we designed our robot, we have a drop-down intake, uh, to... Yep, rather loud. But it have these, uh, inflated tennis balls, uh, in place of real cargo that, uh, Mrs. Scott's holding. Now Kyle, can you demonstrate how the intake sucks it up? You're allowed to carry two balls, or cargo, uh, before shooting them, and we have an indexing system that makes sure the balls aren't, uh, going to get in the way of our launching mechanism. Sadly, we cannot, um, shoot it here, because the ceiling's a bit too low. Yes, we would put a hole through the ceiling.
Yes, you're mugging, anyway.
The goal was to store, launch the cargo into a, uh, into a cargo holder, it's about 14 feet off the ground, uh, and it was this large hoop-shaped, uh, goal. And so, uh, we would just spin, uh, the gray wheels that you might be able to see, uh, in the shooter. Uh, are we able to rub them up, or?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to risk that.
We don't have the other remote if you get that.
Okay. So, yeah, the gray wheels would spin fast enough, uh, and we calculated the launch angle that we would need for a favorable, um, point of where we would shoot is about two feet away from the center hub. It would give us a very, very accurate shooter, and that's why we ranked so well mostly, uh, is that we're shooting very well, very consistently. We got, uh, upwards of 12 balls, uh, when we were playing really well, uh, which was a very impressive feat, uh, compared to a lot of the other robotics teams, uh, in our region. And then probably our best part of our robot is that in the final 30 seconds, you had to store your robot, uh, on different rungs of different heights. We chose to go for a six-foot bar, uh, because that's what we could feasibly do with a fairly new team at the start of the season. And every time we had enough time to go for it, uh, we nailed it. Like, we were several inches off the ground, the judges could not, uh, mistake us for not being off the ground.
This robot weighs roughly 120 pounds, so these two cords right here, they would lift up and grab the bar to pull the robot out. Using a lot of gears and chains, we were able to, uh, strong enough to hold the robot's own weight.
And then there's loads of more detail we could go into, but running out of time sadly. And so I'll let Mr. Ortega, um, do the closing announcements and everything else. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
So Kyle is known as an aggressive driver. He doesn't drive that way in his regular car, but on the field he is, so what makes us part of this team, so? So the team competed in two one-day events and a three-day district event. We were part of a winning three-team alliance on one of our district, or, excuse me, one of our day competitions, which earned us a Blue Banner. And for those not familiar with FRC, Blue Banner is the highest award that you can get to see, and it was our second banner, which we have been wanting to collect for many years, and this has been a big plus for us. After our district competition, we actually finished around 35 in all of the teams in Maryland, D.C., and Virginia, out of about 125 out of 130 teams, so. Uh, we had little issues here and there, but, um, this year was a rebuilding season. We only had two seniors and five returning members, uh, with any experience with building these FRC robots. As you see, these robots are very complicated, so it does take a lot of time, information, gathering, and willingness to learn. They learned, um, many new skills. They learned how to new, use a new CAD tool, which is a computer aided drawing, which we build through the drawing, and they go and take it to the machines and put it out to actually build the, the parts on there. As you see, a lot of those cuts are very precise, that's been being done on CNC, which they have learned this year. Uh, they also have gained, um, a, a lot of information around how to use these tools, how to do other information, and most of all, about being a team. They really boss them into a hard-working team with so many life, um, real-life skills. I believe this robotic team is a leading edge for learning STEM skills. Uh, they are mentored by a group of professionals that have a wide range of experience. Um, these real-life skills are taught to those students, helping them get ready for college or work in the STEM fields. Um, I feel like this team could be the anchor for most of the STEM activity at Osborne. Students that have gone through this program have gone to colleges like MIT, Carnegie Mellon, John Hopkins, William &amp; Mary, uh, UVA, Virginia Tech, Penn State, George Mason, VCU, name a few, which some know. And, um, they're very, uh, and others have gone on to be doctors, professors, other professionals in their industry, in their fields. I feel this team is, um, a really positive team, um, and we've even had some of the mentors come back to help work with our team. They've graduated, they've stayed in the area, they've gone to work at our local businesses, and they come and assist us. Uh, some of these other mentors that have gone to do, guide other FRC teams across the country, um, they've taken them to the world championships. We even have, um, one helping win the world championship with our team. I'd like to challenge the school board, the administrators of Osborne High School, and the parents of these students, um, to find a way to bring students to this team. We had a very small team. We had, at the most, 25. It gets to be a working crew of about 15. As you see, each piece of this is very complicated, more and more skills are learned, more and more, um, students could be gaining these real-life experiences. We've had students go off and gone, they're jobbed because of some of the things they have said. We had one high school student that has gone directly to work for Lockheed, which is, again, a success story because of him learning all these skills. This team is to guide and to learn skills, uh, such as engineering, business, leadership, and one of the other many STEM activities. We would love for members of the school board to come down and watch us sometime and see how, what these students do. You'd be surprised how much they have taken, and from the beginning of the school year to this year, um, they have learned great. They were basically lacking any type of real experience except for a few, but they have jumped into this. Their willingness to show, shows the results of this type of work, and this is very proud to have. Um, I'd also like to thank a couple of, um, our junior mentors is, um, Sirais, um, Suyesh, and, um, Avalon, and the parents, like Steve Johnson, Mark Sugarman, and Ryan Steinbeck, as they came and helped build field elements. The junior mentors gave experience to these students to say, "Guess what? This is what you can do." You know, some of these students have worked at NASA, they've worked around at Lockheed, so they give real-life experience to say, "Guess what, guys? You can learn this and move on to this field." So again, I want to thank you very much for having us, and, uh, we look for the opportunity to see you guys in our work area. Thank you.
We have these for you guys. We 3D printed them. It's our team logo and team ni... I'm not, 1895 Lambda Court's on the bottom.
Chair Seiberg, I, I kind of feel like Eagletron might be a little sad to not be included in the picture. So I didn't think you all were going to dismiss that quickly, so you might want to bring the robot back so that we can... Maybe push, I don't know. That's right. I don't want to take off Mr. Colan's foot here, so. And then we can get all of you to come. It's a great night. We'll get everybody. There we go. All right. Two people in the back, oh, right, Steve's looking now? That's good. Yes, perfect. Everybody sit right here, please. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Yes. Amazing job. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for shining so bright for Osborne High School. Your principal has been over here beaming all night, so. I didn't, I didn't know he was here. I mean, actually, I just turned around and saw you. Yeah, okay.
But before everyone leaves, I just want to say something.
Oh, one moment. Hold on, robotics.
You know, this is my fourth year in Manassas City, and you hear a lot of stuff about our school division. I just want to take you through this year and why everyone here should be proud to be a part of this school division and be a part of Manassas City Public School family. Two meetings ago, we had a group from Mets, and they won a competition. Fifty, all 50 states, I think, somebody tried to get, get our participants in. And Mets won. Yes, that Mets, the Mets that everyone talks about, they won. You look at the finance department at Osborne, two years in a row, would have been three. This isn't the first time the robotics team has won. I was at Battlefield two years ago, and they came away with the banner. Best beating Patriot, best beating Battlefield. Osborne did it. You look at tonight, two kids, Baldwin Intermediate, not second place, not third place, first. It's a lot to be proud of in Manassas City. It's about time that we start spreading the word about how great this school division is and stop letting these naysayers tell our story. Because the truth is in the pudding. And what these kids are accomplishing just this year, a year after a pandemic, they're not getting second place. And there's nothing wrong with second place. But I can tell you what they've been doing this year. It's been first, first here, first there. Should be making everybody proud. I want to thank you for representing Manassas City and showing everyone what we can do. I'm a proud superintendent tonight, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Proud school board, too. Before we go on to our remaining spotlights, I do want to take a moment to introduce some of our dignitaries that are in the audience tonight. We have our mayor, Michelle Davis-Junger here. Anna DiMaria, she's vice president with Manassas Education Association. She's here representing. Councilman Ralph Smith's in the back. And Mr. Tim DiMaria, commissioner of revenue. Thank you for joining us this evening. Mrs. Radford, floor is back to you.
Well, that concludes my portion, and Mr. Craig Gaffela is going to come for the remaining spotlights.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce some new family members that we have. So I want to, we are excited to welcome in to our division three new principals. One at Baldwin Intermediate, one at Jenny Dean Elementary School, and one at Weems Elementary School. So I would like to introduce our first new family member, Ms. Juliette Finnegan.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I am Juliette Finnegan, and I am honored and humbled to be named as principal of Baldwin Intermediate School. We know that all children do not come with the same financial, educational, and social capital, and education is that equalizer. I am so excited to come alongside Baldwin Intermediate School, community, teachers, students, and staff to support that mission and vision and to walk alongside, to live out Jimmy Costis' quote of "Every child, every day, whatever it takes." I'm also really grateful for the warm welcome that I received from Manassas City Public Schools. It's been very heartwarming and encouraging from the moment that I accepted, and I am beyond grateful. And I'm grateful for what Dr. Newman just said. I think it's so important in our role that we dispel and debunk the myths and to rewrite that narrative. And that's something that I'm passionate about. Those who already know me know I'm big on rewriting that story. And you will see it soon on the Baldwin Intermediate Twitter page and my page. I think it's so important for everyone to know the great things happening. So again, thank you so much. I am honored and humbled and super excited to begin this new journey. So thank you very much.
Before I introduce our next new family member, all of our new principals will be starting on July 1, but I want to say that each of these principals has been in the building already. They have been in, getting to know families, getting to know our students, our staff, spending time. They're each assistant principals currently in other divisions, and so they are hitting the ground running here. And so we just want to thank them for saying yes to us and being a part of the new family here in Manassas City. Our next principal is Mr.
Before you go, Ms. Finnegan, when we say you have joined the family, we mean your family has joined our family. So who do you have with you today?
This is my husband. He is a huge supporter. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for him and his support all throughout this journey. Tim Finnegan. My son Connor, he is a ninth-grade freshman in Lattie County Public School. This is Kim Jones. She is a colleague who works with me currently at my current school and amazing educator to a point. My beautiful daughter Avery, she's a senior this year and ready for college. So it's exciting, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Brian Coleman. He will be our new principal at Jenny Dean Elementary School.
Thank you, school board, for having me tonight. Thank you, Dr. Newman, Mr. Gaffela, and to your entire superintendent's staff for everything and the opportunity that you have given me. Dr. Newman said I had 15 minutes, so sit back and relax. No, I'm just kidding. I come from a very hard and humble background, and I've worked in education for 23 years. Of those 23 years, I've worked in low-income schools for 20 years because I see me in all the students that walk through those doors. So when I sit up here and say that I am more than grateful and honored to be the new principal at Jenny Dean Elementary School, it is hard for me to put into words the opportunity that I am about to take path on. And I know that within my vision and mission that I have for Jenny Dean Elementary, for myself and for these teachers, we have one goal, and that's to impact students and change student lives every single day. Thank you, guys, very much for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with you for a very long time. Thank you.
And I would like to announce our newest family member, Michelle Hartman, who will be joining us to be the new principal at Weems Elementary School. Ms. Hartman?
Thank you, everybody. I'm really excited to join the Manassas City family. Dr. Newman and his staff have been just giving me the warmest of welcomes, and I really appreciate it. I am so excited to lead the educational journey of our Weems Wildcats, and this was the best meeting to be at, having all of the children here showing all of their knowledge that they've learned. And I'm really excited to be an elementary school principal and helping those students to build that foundation, to get them where they are with Baldwin Intermediate and Osborne High School and doing all the great work. So I'm excited to be doing that. Thank you for the opportunity. It's very much appreciated. I am really looking forward to starting the journey and serving this community with each and every one of you. So thank you for bringing me on board. And Dr. Newman would like me to introduce my personal cheerleader. My husband Mark is with me. He actually attended Osborne High School, so. And two of his siblings attended Weems, so how about that? So we're just coming back around, Hartmans are coming back around in Manassas City. So thank you for the opportunity. I can't wait to get to know all of you better, and let's do this. Thank you.
Does that conclude our spotlights for this evening? Very good. Okay, on to board committee reports. I know we have a policy committee meeting recently. Mrs. Stevens?
We had a policy committee meeting last Tuesday on the 19th, and we'll discuss it in a little bit further detail on the discussion agenda.
Thank you very much. No other board committee reports? Next up is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that wish to speak? I don't have anybody signed up, but if there is anybody at all, come on down and sign in. Would you like to speak, or are you like to leave?
I just really want to say thank you to Mr. Vargas and the committee and Ms. Jones and everyone over at Baldwin. We've got a graduate of Osborne already, works for Popeyes now, so we know the school system does produce great things, whether they go on to college or not. And I'm very happy to have Ms. Finnegan, and I'm also very happy, Mr. Coleman, because he was also an excellent candidate, and I was a part of that committee for Karen, so appreciate it. You all keep up the great work. Have a great weekend.
Thank you for coming. Come back anytime. Is there anyone at all that would wish to speak? Okay. Moving along, on our consent agenda, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modi, well, as modified?
As presented.
As presented. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
All in favor?
Any opposed?
The motion carries 7-0. First up on our discussion agenda for this evening is policies, and Mrs. Stevens will lead us through that.
Yes. The policy committee meeting met last Tuesday on the 19th. We meet several times a year based on updates that come from the Virginia School Board Association. If you're ever interested in the updates, you can go to the Virginia School Board Association page. They're posted for a year. I want to say we went through probably about 50 policies that have had updates or changes. Most of the updates and changes are in verbiage, going from passive to active language. Some of them have had cross-references updated, some have updated based on new legislation that was just passed. And then some of them, they're, some of them we reviewed, but we did not update. We did choose to modify one policy, and that's IGBA-M. It's called copy of programs for students with disabilities. The VSBA policy used the term "parents." We chose, we chose to change that, modify to that, to parent slash guardian in recognition that we have all different kinds of families in our school division, and we need to be accepting and welcoming of them, and that needs to be stated explicitly in our policies. We did also discuss something that was noticed in some of the policies. Some of the policies use the term "chair" and "co-chair" in referring to the school board. But other policies use "chairmen" and "co-chairmen." And we had a conversation on what it would take to turn all of the policies to say "chair", "co-chair." We determined that it would be very difficult to do as the number of policies that would have to be examined. And any policies that we would change to remove the man at the end of the term "chair" or "vice chair" would then become modified policies. And we really want to keep our policies as closely in line with the VSBA as possible. Even if we just look through the policies that we have that are modified from the VSBA, that's probably about 80 policies that we would have to look through. And generally speaking, the people who have to look through the policies to determine what changes need to be made also perform other tasks. They have other duties within our school division. So what we're going to look at going forward is as we have policies that we have, when there are policy updates that come through, policies that we have either already modified or are modifying, if we can change that verbiage, then we'll have the discussion there. But it's just too challenging and difficult to go back through every single policy we have to look at that verbiage. That's what we did. Otherwise, it was a very quick meeting. No, essentially, new policies were brought before us. There will probably be another policy update in the fall.
Actually, in May.
In May. Oh, gosh. So that's, anybody has any questions? Any questions?
Will we see this in the future for a vote?
We will see this on the consent agenda at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Okay, next up on our discussion agenda is finance and operations, school start and dismissal times. The school board of the city of Manassas will revisit the action taken during the April 10th, 2018 school board meeting regarding school start and dismissal times. Mr. Hawkins, do you have information for us?
So, good evening. I've been asking, I'd just sort of give you a brief history about these bell frings. So for the 2013-2014 school year, we had Baldwin and Weems who were on the last tier of the, of the, of the five-tier system for school and bus dismissal. So what that means is, is that they would come, they would, the buses would drop off students at 8:45 to 8:55, and school would start at 9:05 and end at 4:15. The fourth tier starts at eight, bus drops off at 8:25. School start time at 8:35. School dismissal is at 3:45, and the buses would depart by 3:55. So the, the first time that it was done was in 2013-2014. Baldwin and Weems were on the last tier. They, they went for five years under that system. And now, since that time, which is the last four years, Hayden and Round have been on the last tier, again, which school starts at 9:05 and dismisses at 4:15. So that's where we are today. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments?
Questions?
So, Andy, we've talked about this off and on, I think, since I joined the school board, about what it would take to reduce our buses down one tier and so that we wouldn't have this discussion on this 9:05 to 4:15 arrival dismissal time. And one of the things we kept coming back to was that financially, it's simply not feasible. The cost is too high. And I know you had given us a number more than once, but it was just an impossibility for us to even ponder that. And then I know we had asked the question. And there's no way we can double up. Like, I know you had talked about, you had mentioned that in the mornings Baldwin Elementary and Baldwin Intermediate could ride together, but not in the afternoons. So this is a conversation we've had going on for quite some time, and there hasn't been a perfect solution. Would that be correct?
No. And, you know, we've tried to slice and dice this up many ways. You know, even prior to 2013-14 school year, when we first started off on this five-tier system, we were rerouting buses back to pick up elementary students. So while we didn't have a formalized five-tier, we actually really did have one, right? And we, it would cost us millions, several million dollars, approximately between $2 and $3 billion to, to go to a true four-tier system. That's one challenge. The second challenge is, is that we'd challenge is, is that we'd have to hire something like 20 more bus drivers, which is very hard, very, uh, would be a huge challenge. We are fully staffed at this time, I think. We may have one vacancy, but we don't have any substitutes at all, right? So if one person calls us sick, it really throws us into, uh, every day. It's a, it's an issue. Um, uh, we, we have a great staff. We, it's an all hands on deck type of, uh, operation that we have. So if we have bus drivers out, people from the, uh, transportation department, they, they're out driving every day. So for us to be able to hire additional staff to go to, uh, back to a four tier system would be just as challenging, or if not more, than having the financial implications of going back, um, with, with buying additional, uh, buses at this time.
Ms. Stevens, you mentioned that we had looked at other things besides the, the two late schools on which two will go late. Uh, we also looked at options of trying to move our early, um, start, our seven, seven o'clock schools, our Mayfield and Baldwin Intermediate, to see if we can move them, um, to a later start so they're not standing in the dark in the morning. Um, we looked at combining Mayfield and Mets and then moving Baldwin Intermediate down at the same time as Baldwin Elementary. And we ran into the same problems with how many buses we would need and how many drivers. So we looked at a lot of things. It wasn't just the end.
Right. Okay. Mr. Hawkins, are, are there any school specific strategies to consider with regard to the transportation routes when we're considering this?
No, um, I mean, we've, we've done both Baldwin and Weems and Round Hayden flipping as, as the last tier. Um, for the, well, Round and Hayden has been for the last four years. The year before that, we spent five years with Baldwin and Weems. So, you know, we're, uh, we're not tied to either one of them, uh, in particular. We don't have a, have a preference. Uh, I think to answer your question more broadly, the only thing that we looked at as far as timing is concerned is to make sure that we don't, when you have Baldwin and Osborne, those buses cannot be coming in at the same time. It's already a congested area there with walkers, uh, parents dropping off their children. We want to keep, um, the time away from there so that we don't have so much congestion over there at, at Osborne and Baldwin. But other than that, I mean, if, um, we're fine. It's one of the advantages of being a city with 10 miles radius. We can, we can alternate and switch as, as need be.
Any other question for Mr. Hawkins before we go into further discussion and comment? Mrs. Ball?
I just want to make sure that, uh, I guess at least the public knows. I, I believe that we've gone over a lot of different options on our own, but you know, we have looked at things like walk zones, um, and, and found that even though houses may be very close to Jenny Dean or very close to Baldwin, there have been reasons that we've decided that they needed to stay.
That's right. It was primarily due to the railroad tracks and, and safety concerns and to, we don't want children crossing a full lane highway to be able to get to school, right? So, you know, the walk zones have been expanded. Um, but when I say expanded, but they've also been limited in the fact that we, while we may have a mile, say, walk zone to, to, to the school, uh, I doubt any child is coming that far because I'm not sure you can go a mile around any of our schools without actually crossing a full lane highway. I have to think about that a minute, right? Uh, but, um, you know, the safety of our children is, is our number one priority, is always has been. And so, but it's especially challenging at Dean across of the railroad tracks and the cost of the full lane highways that go through there. Um, but all of our schools face that as well as far as busing to Osborne or to Mets or, you know, Round. I mean, I'm trying to think of a school that we, we don't have a walk zone that would cross a full lane highway, even Weems. Maybe Hayden would be the only one.
Well, and to be honest, I mean, buses have a great on-time rate. We don't have any truancy issues or what have you with kids that are riding the bus and.
We have a wonderful, uh, transportation department team and we're thankful for all of our bus drivers who are very committed to their jobs.
Mrs. Brooks, did you have a comment?
Um, I mean, I know that, you know, I, I know that I am here to, as, on the, on the school board, I wanted to be on the school board to, you know, be able to really make sure our community had everything that they needed and to work for that and that, you know, that's what we collectively, you know, strive to do is to meet the needs of all of our students and all of our families and all of our staff and all of our teachers. And you can go on and on and then you run into the fact of you can't always make it perfect for everyone. Um, I just had one, you know, thought when we, when we came across this and, uh, and that is that, you know, sometimes there's, there's, you know, the need to change the school, you know, bell times to adjust for one factor, but then you also have to run into the problem of, well, then you might have just completely messed up someone else's, um, structure. I know that when I was teaching, one of the things I looked at before I interviewed at a school was the bell times because I wanted the later bell time so that I could get my own children on the bus. So I just hope that we can all be mindful of that as well, that, you know, when you change one cog, you change a lot of factors, so. But know that we as a board are trying to make sure that this decision is the best one for our community. And that's where your, where our hearts are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Um, this is going to affect people in many ways. And, uh, we know that not everybody's going to be happy. Are there other comments, please?
Yes, Ms., um, Chair. So this is not an easy decision for sure. I remember back in, when we had to make this decision in 2000, to, for this school year, 2018, 2019, it was tough back then. Um, but I first think about our students and then our families having to get kids on the bus, off the bus and transitioning the students. I, I, I think I would like to keep the impact as little as possible for our students. Um, I also don't want to strap our future boards to having to go back and forth, back and forth. Um, I consider our future boards as well. And, um, truly, our student population is, is going to grow. Um, and we are going to have to visit start times and stop times again in the future. Um, and I think it would be more appropriate for us to revisit it at that point in time instead of transitioning every, uh, what do we decide, four years, five years? I, I wasn't on the board in 2013, 14. Um, so those would be my comments and my thoughts, but number one, the impact of our students and transitioning our young students.
And Chair, I, I agree with, um, Ms. Williams. You know, we are a growing community. Um, you can drive just about anywhere in the city and see where new homes are going up or where housing changes are occurring. And then we've got Dean. And what we do with Dean can play a role in what our bus tiers look like, how they perform. So I, I agree that we, we should hold off on this to see things like what we're doing with Weems, what the timeline is for Weems, looking at all these new developments, like the development on, um, Grant Avenue. How will that affect our student population? All of those things to see how they factor in and what impact they will have prior to us making any changes.
Thank you. And I, I agree that I don't want to push this off to another board to make a decision in the future. So it keeps going and going. Um, and the fact is that changing and switching times, start and release times, it's disruptive. It's disruptive to families, to our students and to our teachers and staff. Um, I believe a more permanent solution for stability and efficiency is called for. Any further comments? Okay, this will move ahead, um, to our next board meeting and, um, we'll be voting on it at that time in May. Okay, very good. Next up is board member comments. And I will call on Ms. Tenoli, please.
Uh, good evening to the school board and everyone who is joining us tonight. Um, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Um, I firstly feel like, um, I've been a student, a student representative for two years and I feel like this is the most spotlight we've ever had, which, um, it's honestly so amazing to see the drive and dedication of our students is the reason why they, why they are up here today and why they had all those accomplishments. I feel like especially the robots were so cool. My sister's actually on the robotics team and the commitment I see in her team when I drop her every Saturday morning is the reason why they rank so high in districts. Um, and again, every spotlight tonight deserved all the recognition they got and I'm so proud of our community and students for striving this, this high. Um, I also wanted to announce that it is, that it is, um, teacher appreciation week. And as a student, I know how hard our teachers work and they honestly deserve more than just one week. Um, thank you for everything you guys do and we appreciate you, we appreciate you guys, I'm so sorry. I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tenoli. Mr. DeBeep.
Hi. Good evening to all board members, Dr. Newman and everyone who has joined us tonight. I would first like to say congratulations to all those who were recognized through the spotlights. It's always nice to see the accomplishments of the students and the staff in Manassas City and especially all the things that happen throughout the system. And I would also like to say special congratulations and extend a warm welcome to our new principals in the system. Um, it's great to see new people join the Manassas City family. Um, I'd also like to say we are now entering the second half of the last quarter. So I would just like to ask everyone to please continue to check in with everyone and help each other out as we also enter the testing season. So good luck to all students who are taking S O Ls, A P exams or any other important test as we close out the school year. And lastly, I would also just like to say happy teacher appreciation week to all the teachers who continue to help all the students thrive in Manassas City. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeep. And to our new principals, these are our student representatives to the school board and they serve as liaisons to the student community and they report at each of our board meetings. Mr. Hollingsworth, do you have comments this evening?
Uh, yes, uh, Chairwoman Seberg. Uh, I like to congratulate the STEM program and I'm going to make sure I go out there and see how they shoot the ball. It's, it's, it looks like it has a better shot than I do. Um, but I, I, I want to recognize everyone, all the spotlights and, and congratulate them on their success and, uh, echo, uh, Dr. Newman's sentiments about the Manassas City Public Schools. Please spread the word. It's time to be more positive around here. Um, I also want to welcome all the new family members. Uh, I'm so excited and I look forward to what, uh, you're bringing to your schools and I can't wait to see all the new fun things that you bring. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair Seberg.
Uh, yes, I want to say also welcome to our new principals, you know, welcome to the family. We're very excited to, to have you here and to have you join us and to see all the amazing things you do with our amazing students. Uh, speaking of amazing students, I also want to echo the congratulations to, you know, all of those wonderful groups of students that have just earned such high accolades because of how hard they work and how much they have a passion to really be there and to do what they love to do the most. Um, and thank you to our staff and teachers who encourage these students on a daily basis in and out from, you know, preschool all the way up to 12th grade. You guys are amazing and we couldn't do any of this without you guys. So thank you. And I might have missed something I planned to say, but I can't remember. So thank you. That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Ickball?
Yeah, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I really don't even know where to begin tonight. Um, I mean, when I walked in earlier and saw that robot, I knew it was going to be a lot of fun tonight. So, yeah. Um, it really is evenings like these where I'm really proud to be part of the M C P S family. I mean, Dr. Newman and everyone before me said it best. Um, the spotlights tonight were absolutely stacked and so many incredible achievements from our students. Uh, I really am truly astonished by what these kids are capable of. And I really believe there's no limit to what they can do in the future. So, uh, congratulations again to all of our students and the teachers highlighted tonight and, uh, that make M C P S so great. And welcome to all our new principals and their families who are now joining the M C P S family. Um, I just want to conclude by mentioning some events I'll be attending in the weekend. Uh, tomorrow there's a G T symposium at six thirty. Uh, so please attend if you can. I'll be looking to see some of the good research that our G T students have been doing as we saw a glimpse of earlier with, uh, Damian and Grayson's project. And, um, I will also be attending the M E A meet and greet, uh, on Thursday, uh, at six P M. with my fellow board member, Mrs. Spall. So please feel free to attend that as well if you can. And, um, lastly, um, in the Friday and Saturday, um, Osborne Choir is hosting their spring showcase at seven P M. on both days. So please try to make it to that if you can. Um, check out some of our blue ribbon winners. Uh, I know it's going to be a great show. And yeah, that's all I have for today. I hope everyone had a great spring break and, uh, everyone have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ickball. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, um, I just wanted to also say, um, congratulations to Osborne for their second blue ribbon award, um, to the Lambda Corps, Team eighteen ninety-five, um, for their impressive Eagle robot, Eagle Tron robot, um, and, and their professional volunteers that take time out of their busy schedules to, um, see, help them see their, their hopes and dreams come true. Um, Kalen and her peers for their spots on Governor Residential, go, Summer Residential Governor School for Art. Um, the Baldwin History Kids for their state contest win and the great example of G T programs at work and the importance of pursuing passions just in general during and after school. Um, I, I appreciate all the volunteers and all the work that the kids are putting in to, to pursue what they love to do. Um, I'd like to repeat Ms. DeBeep and Ms. Tenoli's teacher appreciation sentiments and also thank Dr. Newman for his encouraging, um, his encouragement to spread the word. Um, I would like to let people know that there is a Manassas Reads event that is, um, a partnership between Prince William Library and the school system on Saturday. Um, there is a Mayfield Orchestra event tonight and I believe band is Thursday at seven P M. I would also like to welcome all three principals, um, Baldwin Intermediate, Dean, Weems. Um, we have a lot to look forward to with you and we really are very excited to have you. We also have been challenged to a boss of the toss contest that will be happening on the first Friday of May. Um, so we are going to have to, well, get to play cornhole, uh, against city council at seven P M. on Friday, the sixth. Um, and I will be attending a tra- a childhood trauma training event with, uh, Chair Seberg on Saturday. So might, or might not make it to Manassas Reads, but that is really guaranteed to be a fun event, especially if you have young ones. Um, and I just wanted to acknowledge the Weems and the Washington Post Teacher Awards. We've seen teacher awards come through this time of year. It's a great time of year to see that. And so I just wanted to congra- congratulate all those, um, winners as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you. Um, I absolutely echo what all my colleagues have said up here. So I'm not going to reiterate everything that they said. I want to first thank Ms. Tenoli and Mr. DeBeep, DeBeep, that, um, we're down to the final few board member, I mean, board meetings that we are going to see both of you. And this, this year has been fantastic because the prior year we were on Zoom and it just didn't feel, it just didn't feel right. So I'm so thankful that we've had this time together. And, um, Ms. Tenoli, um, your future is bright. Your future is bright. Um, real quick with, with all the spotlights tonight, I just wanted to also reiterate, kind of take the big picture and show you. Uh, we had history award winners. We had fine arts award winners, visual arts award winners, robotics award winners. We're, it's a broad spectrum of our, um, accomplishments. And I think Dr. Newman is exactly right. We do some fantastic things. And one of the reasons why we do so, so many things is because the city helps us fund our budget. We, we were able to hire a couple more G T teachers this year. We hired a couple more last year. The robotics, um, I did go visit them on a Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago, and they had this, now I'm, I'm, the terminology I am not familiar with, but CAD, we know CAD. They design their, their projects in software. And maybe you can help me with this, this big table that actually cuts.
The CNC.
CNC. Precision cutting machine. They had to use one a while ago that was so slow and with, they got a newer one. It could cut more, could faster, more precise, so they could win. Um, so those are the things that we do up here to help our system and our kids and our students shine. And Mrs. Seberg, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Vice Chair Stevens? Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. I was going to talk about a few different things. Last Friday night, Chair Seaberg and I were able to go to the MCPS Art Show at Osborne High School. It was artwork from every school, every grade level, every classroom, from pre-K through high school art, and I was blown away. It took over the whole gym, the Fine Arts Commons. It was amazing to see the talent that was on display. We have kids who didn't come up here tonight, but who are going places, because they are so creative, they are so talented. And yes, we had high school students who had offers for purchasing their art. So they're already making it into a business. It was amazing. It was phenomenal. And then today, and three more times, the School Board is participating in what's called the Master Board Cohort, which is a cohort that's meeting four times to learn how to be a better, stronger board, to better serve the students, the staff, the teachers, the community at large, because Manassas City isn't just our schools. It's our neighborhoods. It's the people who live here. It's the people who come visit here. They're all intertwined together, and it's our job to help make sure that that fabric is a nice, tight fabric, and it all works well together. Saturday, Manassas Reads. I'll be reading something to kids at 11:45 in the morning. And what's really cool is you can go to the farmer's market first, have breakfast, your favorite caffeinated beverage, listen to some music, then come to Manassas Reads, do some fun activities with your kids, listen to stories, and probably get some awesome free books. Then you can have lunch in Old Town. Then you can do the, you know, you can spend the whole day. Finally, SOLs, AP exams are coming up. This is a really stressful time for everybody, kids, parents, teachers. I want everybody to take a minute and remember, you are worth more than a score on a piece of paper. You are people. You are valuable. You are important. You are worthy regardless of what your score is. We care about you. We care about all of you, and not just what that piece of paper says. So get a good night's sleep the night before. In the morning, eat breakfast before you go home. Eat breakfast at school, because breakfast is free, and according to my eight-year-old daughter, it's really good, better than what mom makes at home. And take a deep breath and relax before you go take that test. It'll all be good. It'll all be okay, and we'll be proud of you no matter what you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. I was wondering if anybody was going to bring up the Master Board Training. We've been together all day long today, all day. Everybody up here on the dais. And again, just to tell you a little bit more about Master Board, this is how we define it. A team of united professionals with diverse opinions, working together as a cohesive unit with common goals aligned to strengthen leadership and to meet the educational needs of the community. So today was a day of team building, self-evaluations, and thoughtful discussions, and we're going to continue this over the next few months to become a stronger, more efficient, and effective board. It's our commitment to the community. Also, Alex mentioned, and I want to reiterate, that Osborne Choirs will be performing in their spring show. It's called Find a Way. It's on Friday and Saturday evening at 7:00 PM. Come out for a lovely musical evening and to support our students. It is not, they will not disappoint. It is a fantastic show, and they're fantastic performers. And the last thing I want to mention is, this is our last meeting here in City Hall for a while. We'll be moving our business meetings to Dean Elementary. So that one will be May 10th at 6:00 PM. So we'll be there for a while. And Mrs. Spall would like to tell you all about prom.
I just want to remind everyone.
May 7th, prom. Yep. And there is an effort for after-prom. It probably would be on the Osborne PTSA website. If you would like to contribute supplies or money to after-prom, after-prom is an effort to keep our students safe after prom. So they're safely entertained, and they can win prizes and things like that.
All night long.
Yeah. That's all I have tonight. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mr. Hollingsworth. The School Board Meeting adjourned. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.